I'll let you.
So we're ready for the audio visual signal?
Yeah, we're good, Mayor. The light's dimmed.
Oh, wait.
Oh, there we go.
Okay, we're, okay. Call to order, meeting of the Wilsonville City Council on February 7th, 2022 at 5:28 PM for the work session. And we'll start with finding out if there are any counselor concerns. Any comment on the agenda or order of agenda at this point? Thank you. So we'll move to our city council retreat discussion led by Mr. Cosgrove and Ms. Monbert.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor. I am Zoe Monbert, the Assistant to the City Manager, and with us this evening is Sarah Singer-Wilson. She is our consultant, who will be walking us through our planned board and council retreat that we're hoping to hold in May. So I'd like to turn it over to Sarah. She's going to walk through what we're thinking and then also seek your input to make sure that we can make it a successful retreat activity for you and the boards and commissions.
Good evening, Council. It's wonderful to see you all and looking forward to working with your team again as we bring together the city council and all of your boards and commissions for a day-long workshop. I think we tentatively planned this for May 14th and would just kind of walk you through a few of the goals that we talked about with staff for the workshop and see if you have some input on what you'd like to see for this opportunity in bringing the boards and commissions together. So I'm going to share my screen to show you what we've discussed so far. And hopefully you all can see this. So some of the desired outcomes that we've talked about with staff, what we're targeting here is, one, just to conduct some team building with the city council and the boards and commissions. And that will give you all a chance to get to know each other better as you work together to advance the city's goals. Some of the other ideas that we've talked about for desired outcomes for the session are to identify future needs, challenges, opportunities for collaboration. We want to build some awareness and foster alignment around the council's goals and the goals of the boards and commissions. And so that's really what we're thinking for the desired outcomes for this workshop. But we wanted to check in with all of you to see if there's anything else you'd like us to focus on as far as outcomes go as we think about how we want to design this agenda. So at this point, I'll just see if there are any comments from the mayor of the council.
Anybody have any, well, I guess I have a question is, and that is, are there any special plans we need to make with regard to the public meeting act aspect of this? Or anything you have, we need to consider there? I'm sure this has been thought through. I just want to touch on it.
As far as the Public Meetings Act, I'll let Zoe add to this as well. But we would certainly publish this as an open public meeting and open public meeting and follow any, you know, requirements for that. Yes, just as we would, similar to the council goal-setting workshop that was, that we did last year. Yeah.
Council President Ochravall. Thank you. Has staff had conversation or thoughts on, well, I suppose other staff members, department heads will also be in attendance? And what that dynamic or interaction might look like too?
Zoe, do you want to respond to that?
Yes, so we will be inviting the department heads as well as the staff liaisons to each board and commission. So they will be informed, invited to hear the conversation. We want to make sure that you and the boards and commissions are on the same page so that you're all working towards the same council goals. So we will make sure that at least one person from those departments are present. They've been provided the information and then we will see how things look as we get closer to May on who will be in attendance.
Okay, thank you.
And we are currently planning to host this at the city's community center since it is a large space so that we can have a gathering of people in a safe environment.
It's always subject to change and/or amendments based on whatever variant is coming our way.
Let's hope not. I wonder if we could see that graphic again, Ms. Singer-Wilson, please?
You bet. You bet. Just a moment. So let me zoom in there. So those are the outcomes that we've identified so far.
Sarah, did you also want to talk about some of the pre-work session stuff that we talked about as well in terms of trying to set the table and expectations for the boards and commissions as well?
Yeah, so we will be doing some outreach leading into this workshop. And so this is part of the outreach to just to hear from the council if there's anything, any desired outcomes that you have. But we'll also be reaching out to the committee and/or the board and the commission members to see what their desired outcomes are. And again, making sure, reviewing any goals that they have, providing any background information to all the members. So if there are existing goals for each of the boards or commissions, make sure that we share that out as well as all the council goals. And start to just build some, again, awareness and familiarity amongst that and really start to look for similar themes where there might be alignment and opportunities for collaboration amongst the groups.
When I think about all the different committees, boards and commissions, you know, they really run the gamut. Of course, we've got the Kita Cota Committee. We have the New Arts, Culture and Heritage. And then we go to the more longer, much more long-term committee like Planning Commission. And I would think they each have a different way of thinking about what their goals are because we've got master plans that guide some of those. So how would we set this up in a way that reflects master plans and things like that that are guiding some committees?
So yeah, I think through the outreach process and reviewing some of the background information, there may be some, because there'll be quite a few people there. So there'll probably be some small group conversations organized as well where there's, where there may be some common themes or some convergence of certain goals. And so, you know, it's not going to be, obviously, there's different interests and different work areas. And so we'll design those appropriately. So there will be, there'll be some sub-conversations happening throughout the day.
I see Council Lindvill's hand at the top.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the, one of the things that I wonder about is, while collaboration might be one of the goals, I don't, I wonder if it is really possible and, you know, among the desperate groups and that they really don't have, for lack of a better word, they really don't need to collaborate well in order to get their work done. And I'm wondering if we, one of the goals might be for us to share some of the, you know, how to, how to get to high-functioning organizations as being, so that, so that there's, we take the best ideas from all of the variety of boards, the tenure of all of the participants, and also share among some of the newer people, how can we get to being a high-functioning organization through having high-functioning boards and commissions?
I think that could be, that's a great idea and one that we can build into some of the team-building opportunities and just share some of those best practices for how to, how boards and commissions can operate as high-performing entities as well as contributing to just an overall high-performing entity amongst all the Wilsonville boards and commissions in the council.
You know, I was tagging off of what Council Lindvill just said. In some respects, I mean, I don't, when you hear the word collaboration, just different settings can mean different things. And I would not want to imply that we need all of these people to be moving in the same direction or thinking together because we're going to have different ideas, which we want. But I, I know that there are, we have heard a lot of people on the council and on the commissions talk about these opportunities for collaboration that are really in front of us in some cases, like perhaps the Kita Cota Committee, the DEI Committee, the Arts, Culture and Heritage, and some, you know, we've got our library. So there are some things where they can elevate and reinforce different aspects of direction that we have going. But that probably doesn't apply as much to some of the other boards and commissions. Does that make any sense?
Yes, I, it makes, it makes perfect sense.
I was just being a little careful about going too far. We're not all trying to be in the very same club at all times saying all the same thing.
Yeah, I would say that as well or confirm that also, that it's like we have three boards that are sort of administrative in nature, the Planning Commission, the Budget Committee, and the DRB. And, and, and they're different than the day-to-day program boards, which you just mentioned, which are parks, library, tourism, the Arts Council, and the Sister City Association. Though that's more like programming that is directly involved with lots of citizens, the general citizens. And, and there, and there is a lot of opportunity for them to collaborate or corroborate or whatever. The, you know, parks and libraries, certainly, library and the arts, tourism and parks, there are a lot of intersections for those. But, but there's kind of that other strata, which is Budget, Planning Commission, and DRB, which is much more, I don't know how to say, administrative, I guess, or, and less involved directly with everyday citizens unless they're building a house or something.
Council President Ochravall. Thank you. I very much agree with what, you know, Council Leahan just described there. And, but I also see, and I think, you know, I don't, I don't know that collaboration, we have many words on this screen now, so a different word is probably a better fit. But I see that this event has great opportunity for relationship building, I guess. That's really what it is, between the different boards and committees. And I don't know that that's necessarily collaboration, but relationship building, I think, is one of the very important things that we should focus on and look at doing. And so I'm curious, like, how big of a group would we be with all of our boards and committees? And then I'm assuming we're going to have some sort of small group opportunities to, like, breakouts or something throughout the day? You know, just looking at sometimes people's comfort level is different in, you know, a larger group versus a smaller group. And part of our goals, I think, too, it depends on us continually developing and kind of fostering leadership within our city. And this is an excellent opportunity to develop some of the leaders that we already have and introduce them to more people and get more comfortable in their role and in their role as a leader. So just thinking of different ways that we could do that.
Thank you for those comments. There certainly will be, again, different types of opportunities to engage throughout the day. So as you mentioned earlier, there's different needs for the groups. And one of the ways that we'll be able to define that further is through the outreach that we'll do with the, with the participants ahead of time. So I believe we're planning to do one-on-one interviews with the chairs and then provide an online survey for the rest of the membership to contribute their input as well. And so we'll kind of see what their desired outcomes are. Different boards and commissions might be at different levels as far as how they perform or what they feel like they need to support them in their roles. And so we really want to try to identify that through the outreach as we think through the agenda. And so in discovering what those needs are, then we can design some small group activities around that to make sure that we're catering to that. But certainly, one of the most important things that you guys have mentioned is providing those relationship-building opportunities. So lots of that.
Great, great.
Anything else? Well, Council, your background is almost the same color as the little raised hand.
I know, I know. I know, it's hard. Yeah, I, I think in the, in the one bubble that was there that where you stated to identify future needs, challenges, and opportunities, I wonder if the period ought to be there? And, and that we really have, you know, we really could spend some time finding out and listening and sharing what future needs, challenges, and opportunities are for each of the boards and commissions and for the council. And, and I don't know if it's opportunities for collaboration. I think that is one aspect. But I think opportunities is also something that I would like to hear about.
So just, just to make sure I'm understanding, so just identify needs, challenges, and opportunities?
Yep, I think that's what she suggested, is just put the period after opportunities.
I see what you're saying. That, that deserves a focus just right there. And there, there may be an opportunity for collaboration for other things.
And I think one of the things, one of the things that we talked about doing at the top is allowing each board, commission, or committee, committee have a couple minutes to just, a high level, talk about some of the important things they're working on and what their role is. We'll also be talking about, you know, the councils, the council goals and council priorities and how all these different groups are playing a role in shaping that vision that the city council has set. And even if it's DRB or Budget Committee or Planning Commission, they're all working on important things that tie into council priorities, even if they are operating under an Oregon Revised Statute in terms of their bylaws. Their role is still very important and they all tie into what the city council's trying to do to keep Wilsonville clean, green, and safe.
How, how many, what's the length of time for this, that's being considered for this day?
This would be, generally, these things go from nine to three or four. So it allows time to have a little food beforehand, then we'll bring in some lunch. We'll have to kind of aggregate everything and then present back to the group. So that's kind of what we're thinking at this point. Open to suggestions on that as well.
That sounds, that sounds good. Any other questions for the council?
Sarah, do you have everything that you need for, to help develop the day and to put together the questions for our boards and commissions?
Yeah, I, I think I do. And I, this won't be the last opportunity that the council can weigh in. We'll have, as part of the outreach, we'll share those outreach opportunities with you as well. So if you think of other things that you'd like to see, you'll be, you'll have that opportunity to share it then. Or just share it via email. You know, you know where to find us.
I have one more thought, and it probably is going to be one of those things that I am told often that I'm going to solutions and I'm, it's not the right time to say this, but the, that little bar just came over. We have that, anyway, I was, I was wondering if we could mark down something just in our, in our, one of the opportunities that might arise, if we could just plug it in there, might even be after thinking about somebody who has been on one of these boards in the past, they termed off or what, you know, what happens afterward? Are they an ambassador? How, do they have a role as a, as a resident after they've played one of these, led one of these positions? I'm curious what people think, what people, that might come under opportunities.
Okay, we've got it noted. Thank you.
Well, it looks like we don't have any more hands raised. So if you've got what you need, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We'll be circling back with you after the outreach to share the agenda and what we've come up with for the day.
Right, thank you. And so we'll go back to, we'll zero back in with Ms. Monbert to the next topic, Tourism Promotion Committee bylaws update.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor. Let me just pull up my screen really quickly. So this is really a high-level overview of the Tourism Promotion Committee bylaws that were in your packet, really just for transparency for those in the community that may not be as familiar with our program. So this evening, before you, we will go through the bylaws that are an update in your packet for Resolution 2951. And these bylaw updates were recommended to you from the Tourism Promotion Committee at their January 13th, 2022 meeting. So I'm just briefly going to walk you through the proposed changes to these charter amendments before they're on your consent agenda this evening. The first update is Section 3C. This is the grant section. Currently, the Tourism Promotion Committee reviews both city and county tourism grant programs. However, with the new responsibility for the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Committee to review their own grants, we're moving the tourism grants to the New Arts, Culture, and Heritage Committee, which was created by Resolution 2941 on December 20th. The county program actually ended earlier in the pandemic and is no longer active. So these two elements do not need to be in the bylaws any longer for the Tourism Promotion Committee. However, we've updated the language and not just struck it completely because there could be an opportunity in the future that there are other grant programs that the council wants to have the Tourism Promotion Committee review and make recommendations on. So we've updated the language rather than striking it completely. The next section is an addition called 3D. And this is really just incorporating into the bylaws the work that our Tourism Promotion Committee currently does. They currently review the contract for the Tourism Promotion and Destination Marketing Consultant. As you'll recall, they review the request for proposals before it comes to you for review and before we put it out on the street for actually looking for our consultants. They also serve as the review committee for that contract as well. Next is adding in the development of the fiscal year five-year action plan and one-year implementation plan of the tourism strategy. You'll recall, this comes to you generally every spring for your adoption. So the committee's already doing this work to show not only you but also the community how they're working towards those goals. So we're just adding it into the bylaws to make it clear what they're tasked with moving forward. These are a few housekeeping items. These are the final changes. In Section 7, this is how folks can participate in our meetings. It had included participating by phone, but as we're already updating the bylaws, it makes sense to add participation virtually as well. Section 9 is added as a conflict of interest provision. This is just good practice. The language will look familiar to you because it's consistent with the language that was added for the New Arts, Culture, and Heritage Committee when you adopted their bylaws. This is important because this group does review contracts and could look at recommending funding to you as they have with previous grants. So that is just a quick update on the bylaws that are before you this evening that will just update the Tourism Promotion Committee bylaws. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And I will stop sharing.
I'm not seeing any questions. It looks like they've done a thorough job there. No, I do see one. Council President Ochravall.
Sorry, I do have a question. It's, it's, um, maybe, you know, slightly subtopic or a little off-topic. In the packet, there was the reference, let's see, the, the, removing the reference to the community matching grant program and Clackamas County grant program? And that the Clackamas County grant program has been discontinued during the pandemic. Could you just catch us up to speed on, on what happened to it? Or is it coming back or what are the plans or just kind of fill in that storyline there?
Yeah, absolutely. The tourism program, grant program through the, so let me back up. When we got into 2020, the city had paused our program. And that was mostly because we didn't know when we were going to come back. Clackamas County had a similar situation where they ended up reducing their program size and then not moving forward with the programming because we couldn't really invite people to come travel to our area when we had a stay-home, stay-safe order in place. So they had paused it at that time in 2020 and then they still didn't have a lot of funding for their program and it just really disappeared. We are fortunate that Clackamas County has been able to rebuild their team. So we have a few other folks that have joined the Mount Hood Territories Program as our staff contacts, but we don't, we haven't heard anything about the grant program coming back. But with the language change including some language allowing that the Tourism Promotion Committee to still make those recommendations, we could still have them do that in the future.
Yeah, it gives some flexibility, opportunity for the future. And it sounds like maybe there's hope then for something there. It's just not clear what it might be yet or when it may fall into place.
At this time, there are no plans for a new city tourism promotion program or a new Clackamas County program that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that, Council Leahan.
Yeah, of course, that, that, the money for those grants was coming from the transit room tax. And, and they just plummeted, you know, the, the revenue from room tax just plummeted. So that, that was the main issue there. But my question was, so has there been any pushback at all from, from anyone on tourism about moving it over to arts and culture?
No.
They're fine with that also?
Yeah, so we brought information forward to them regarding the New Arts, Culture, and Heritage Program before it came to council and before it was adopted and informed them of this proposed change. There didn't seem to be any issues. And as you'll recall, a lot of the programs that were funded out of the Tourism Promotion Grants were really more local events. And the tourism program is supposed to be focused on attracting folks from at least 50 miles away. So it does make sense that this move to a more localized program. And then, as I mentioned, we did take this to the Tourism Promotion Committee for their recommendation to council before bringing these bylaws to you. So they're aware of the changes to the, the bylaws or proposed changes as well.
Okay, perfect. Thanks. Okay. Perfect. Thanks. Okay.
All right. So we're good there. Thank you, Ms. Monbert. I think we've covered that. And that brings us to Mr. Stone with the ERP fiber update.
Is he coming in virtually? Okay, there he is.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. It's nice to be here. Um, let me, uh, share my screen here real quick.
Nice to see you, Mr. Stone.
All right. Uh, I'm Andy Stone. I'm the IT Director for the City of Wilsonville. I'd like to take a few minutes to bring you up to speed on a couple of the bigger projects that we are working on here at the city. One is a fiber project that is at the beginning stages and a software implementation that we are working towards completing. I'll give a brief overview of each of these and then be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Uh, first off, let's talk about a fiber expansion project within the city. Back in 2017, the city completed a fiber strategic plan that examined how the city should move forward with fiber. We looked at a number of options, from only using fiber for key city needs to running fiber all the way to the home. It was determined that the best path forward was to install fiber and/or fiber conduit everywhere it made sense in conjunction with city infrastructure projects. It was recommended to install more fiber strands than immediately necessary to create a fiber backbone and give the city options down the road. The most extensive part of the process is laying the conduit and making the, and it makes the most financial sense to perform that work if we already have the ground opened up for another project. The other recommendation, um, uh, was to, to, uh, partner with other entities for fiber builds to share costs. Uh, we're about to embark on a new project that does just that. In addition to the American Rescue Plan Act funds that cities receive, state legislator, legislators have the ability to contribute money to qualifying projects within their districts. Thanks to some quick work from Mr. Ottenott, Mr. Leo, and their counterparts in Sherwood and King City, a proposal was created utilizing a plan developed by the IT staff of the respective cities to strengthen fiber infrastructure in the region. Senator Thatcher, Representative Neuron, contributed approximately $1.6 million to a series of projects, the largest of which is creating another fiber pathway from the east side of Wilsonville to the west side. Logistically, this is a tough project considering it will require, or it will require crossing a railroad, EPA power territory, and the freeway. The city, the city is partnering with Sherwood Broadband on the project to help strengthen communication ties, but also due to their experience with large fiber buildouts. The plan is to create a design-build contract to tap into builders with fiber construction experience to handle the difficulties of this project. We will outline a preferred path to try to pick up as many city resources as we can, but take into consideration the design recommendation for cost and efficiency. We hope to bid this project out in the next month or so. The goal of this project is create, is to create resiliency for the city's infrastructure and build up a backbone for future projects that will require fiber. Another goal is to provide access to several public areas to ensure that people can get to the internet in times of need. A real concern that the city observed during the pandemic was that internet access became harder to obtain when places like coffee shops, restaurants, libraries, community centers were forced to close their doors. As things like schools moved online, it was difficult for certain segments of the population to find reliable internet options. As the fiber ring is built out, we plan to add wireless access points to portions of Town Center and Marassi Parks and enhance access around the library. The best locations within those areas will be identified by parks and library staff to maximize the benefit. And an internet connection provided by Sherwood Broadband will supply the access through the new infrastructure that's being built. In addition to those regional projects, the IT Department has put forth several other smaller fiber build projects for consideration for city ARPA funds. One is a build down Bowburg Road from Beckman to the New Public Works and existing smart facilities, and another is a rundown Kinsman from Barber to Wilsonville Road. Each of these are designed to add resiliency to the existing infrastructure. The last piece of our fiber plan is reaching out to established communication companies and inquiring about potential partnerships as they expand their infrastructure. There's a lot of development going on, and we feel that there are some opportunities to be had. Over the last couple of years, we've reached out to a number of companies with mixed results, but we're cautiously optimistic that we may be able to strike up a partnership soon. I also have to kind of, my, mea culpa on the, uh, uh, our Fiber Vault picture here. Um, I did not have time to run out and get one of our Fiber Vault pictures. This one's kind of a stock picture. Usually they're filled with a lot more cobwebs and maybe a frog or two, something like that. But, uh, I just wanted to make sure, uh, you knew that, uh, this, uh, splice case, uh, wasn't, uh, one of ours. So, uh, as those projects ramp up, I also wanted to give you an update on a project that we have been working on for a couple of years and are starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel. That's the Enterprise Resource Planning Implementation Project, or what we refer to as the ERP project. The city is replacing our existing ERP, Eden, with Tyler Technologies flagship, flagship products of munis for financials, HR payroll, and utility billing, and intergov for the permitting side. As we kicked the project off in late 2019, I thought that I had accounted for most of the things that could derail a three-year implementation project. Sadly, I failed to account for a global pandemic, wildfires, ice storms, vendor staffing difficulties, and a water leak at City Hall. I guess those are just lessons learned for my next project. Despite all the uncertainty and curveballs, the city implementations teams are getting it done. We went live with financials in October of 2020, and HR and payroll went live in the April of 2021. If everything tracks, we'll be performing the cutover for permitting next week, and utility billing is scheduled to go live around July of this year. While the first two modules were primarily internal facing, permitting and utility billing will have significant external facing sides that we are excited for. There will be real benefits for citizens as we go live, uh, such as online portals and scheduling permits and inspections and ease of access to information, plus new ways of paying utility bills. This is on top of the efficiencies, uh, that are created on the backend for our staff. Our approach to the rollout has been to get the core systems working and then expand their capabilities from there. These systems have so much potential that I anticipate that it will take several more years of development and tweaking to get things really dialed in for the maximum efficiency. Needless to say, we've had to pivot multiple times during the, the project, but I have to say that the implementation teams comprised of city staff that have been, that we have had have been nothing short of amazing. Those of you that have been through a conversion like this know how difficult they can be, and our staff has weathered all the difficulties like champions. I'm extremely impressed with the work ethic and dedication to getting this project through to the finish line for the city. That concludes my, uh, brief overview of a couple of our larger projects, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Councilor Linville.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you for the presentation, Mr. Stone. I have two questions. Um, one is, um, what, um, I thought I understood that the New Public Works Building is anticipated to be the emergency, uh, response headquarters. And so is that part, part of the rationale for getting fiber to them?
No, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah. So we already actually have fiber to the smart building and that we can get to the new building. We want to add a, a second pathway, if you will. So if there was anything that ever happened to the one pathway, um, we have a, a secondary resilient pathway to, uh, make sure that the connection stays up.
Okay. And then, um, my second question, I, I've been through an ERP. I've been through two ERPs, and, um, it, it, it accounts for quite a few of the gray hairs that I have on my head. So kudos to you for seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. Um, I think that when we approved this, uh, implementation plan, um, back in 2019, um, there was additional staff, staffing that was, um, associated with the, the conversion. It, it, might correct it with that, and what, what will happen with those additional staff, um, once the implementation is complete?
So I think that the additional staff that you're referring to is actually a project manager that we have brought on. Um, she is, she's been fantastic and has really helped drive this, this, uh, project. Uh, her contract will end at the end of this, uh, this thing. She's always been a kind of a separate contractor for this, for this project. So she'll help us get through, uh, the end and help us with some documentation, and, uh, we might bring her back for a few other small things, but, um, but her contract is set to end after the implementation is over.
Well, and Councilor Linville, um, supplemental to that, there was discussion that we may need to bring in some temporary folks to handle day-to-day activities, admin functions, and we have done that. Um, they, they're not line items in terms of FTE. It's more for contracted services, and we have utilized that in some instances.
So, um, I guess the final question is, um, you know, you never know when you go into these whether the new ERP is going to, um, or the modules are going to make work easier or make more, work more complex. And so I'm just wondering if there's, uh, any, I mean, are we able to manage everything now that you can see with implementation and ongoing functioning without the need for additional staffing?
The, there's no doubt that the new, uh, ERP is a very, um, uh, intense, uh, product. We've been trying to set it up so that, uh, everybody can, um, do everything that they need to with the, with the staff that we have. There may be, because it is such a robust, robust product, there may be some needs at, at some point bringing somebody in to help with, uh, creating reports, SSR reports, that, that type of, uh, uh, thing to, to really get the maximum amount out of our, out of the new ERP. But, um, you know, as people are learning the new processes, there are certainly some things that are maybe a little bit more difficult than they were initially. Um, but, you know, it took four or five years in Eden, too, to kind of really smooth a lot of that stuff out. So, um, you know, each department is handling it a little bit differently, and, uh, I think they're, they're doing a, a great job. If, if there was something that we were going to bring in, it might just be to help enhance the, or maximize the, uh, enhancement out of the, uh, the system.
I had a question about, you, you referenced, just give a little more background on the, the physical challenges of, uh, crossing the railroad and so forth. Is that something that, um, is just another part of the, another, uh, road gum, so to speak, to manage with the project manager and our partners, or is there anything, thing more to add to that?
Well, as you can imagine, uh, crossing a railroad or a freeway, um, a lot of the controlling entities want to make sure that you're doing it right, right, not causing any kind of issues. So there are a, um, there's significant permitting and, um, those types of things that are required for this, this kind of a thing. Depending on the path that we take, um, you know, we may be able to go over certain things over an aerial side, and then, you know, we may have to bore under others depending on where they, they fall in the, uh, in the pathway and stuff. So it's really just, uh, making sure that, um, you know, we work with somebody that has experience with this kind of stuff so that we can get through the, uh, process, uh, efficiently.
Thank you. Council President Ochravall.
Thank you. Um, thanks for the, kind of the update on a couple of these items, and it was interesting to hear about that. And, um, I understand that, you know, this is, well, both. They're very much ongoing projects. Um, so as we continue to talk about it, I wonder if, um, we can see perhaps a map as things get more solidified, um, you know, kind of what the, the routes, so that's helpful to us in visualizing. And also specifically when you talked about the different bicycle spots, um, in Town Center and, um, parks, you know, right away I thought, oh, it's, it's terrific. And that both of those locations are on the east side. Um, but then I'm thinking, okay, what, what do we have on the west side? And maybe this already exists, um, but it would be helpful for me to, to see kind of spatially where some of the, um, you know, assets that, that we have or are, are looking to have in the future for our community members. Um, that, that would be a helpful visual to have, too. So.
Sure, sure. And I, I do have something here. I can share my screen again just real quickly. Um, this is, this is nothing that is, uh, solidified at this point. This is just kind of a very rough idea of what we are, are looking at here.
Oh, great. Yeah.
Um, so this kind of, uh, magenta line here is a proposed, uh, pathway, um, that would get us from one side to the other, and it picks up a couple of different, uh, city assets. Um, yeah, there is a potential option of, of possibly being able to pick up the, uh, water towers up on, off of Ellexon Road, coming down to Canyon Creek, where we already have existing fiber and stuff. So we're, we're really trying to kind of build out geographically a diverse ring to, to be able to do this. Uh, part of the reason that the Town Center and Marassi Parks were, uh, chosen, at least initially, is that we already have a, a good pathway to those, to those areas already. Um, and it, and it makes it, uh, easier. And we wanted to kind of use this as a trial to see what works, what doesn't work. Um, as we are doing other projects, we are trying to get fiber into those areas also, so that if, if we did decide that we wanted to spin this up in, in a, in a different location, um, it's, it's easier. But we wanted to kind of get something to, to, as a trial, uh, first off.
Okay. And, and so on this map here, what, what are the blue lines?
Uh, so these are, these are rough approximations of fiber that we already have in the ground, uh, that type of thing. Um, numbers one and two are the, uh, potential runs that I mentioned earlier down Bowburg and down Kinsman, uh, road. Um, and then, uh, another potential there on, uh, number three there. We, we have a lot more fiber and, and we have some other details there. It's sometimes hard to, to display a map that has all of the information and, and is also still readable in, in this kind of thing. So it gives kind of a high level of, of what we're looking at.
Okay. Thank you. This is helpful. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments or questions? It's a huge project, and it was, um, it was very, um, hard work, lots of in-depth communications during that time of the ARPA funding, and really glad for how all of the IP staff from the different cities worked together and our state representatives and different cities. So now we just have to do it, right? It's a lot easier said than done.
Yeah, yes. It's, uh, it'll be a very challenging but interesting and, and rewarding project once we get it taken care of.
All right. Um, if there are no other questions, that will conclude our work session, and we will reconvene at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
Perfect timing. Take a deep breath. We're gonna start.
Awesome.
Going to order the meeting of the Wilsonville City Council on February 7, 2022 at 7:04 PM. Will the city manager please call the roll?
Counselor-
City Recorder.
Counselor Linville?
Here.
Counselor West?
Here.
Council President Oquervall?
Here.
Counselor Leehan?
Here.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Here. Will the city manager please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I, could I have a motion, Council President Oquervall, to approve the following Order of Agenda as amended?
Your Honor, I move to approve the Order of Agenda as amended.
Thank you. Do I have all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Will the city attorney please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 856 Legislative Hearing in ordinance of the City of Wilsonville, amending Wilsonville Code Section 4.181 to correct a Scrivener's error.
Thank you.
I believe at this point we need to read the ordinance into the record. Is that correct?
Yes. You're gonna read the entire ordinance? Yes.
Correct. Ordinance number 856 in ordinance of the City of Wilsonville, amending Wilsonville Code Section 4.181 to correct the Scrivener's error. Whereas the City of Wilsonville enacted ordinance number 675 on March 1, 2010, to amend Wilsonville Code Sections 4.001 and 4.156 in order to eliminate content-based regulations and adopt replacement provisions achieving content neutrality as required by law. And whereas the City of Wilsonville enacted ordinance number 704 on June 18, 2012, which established an exemption to sign permitting and limits for up to two flags attached to a poles designed to be raised and lowered as long as such flags did not exceed a height of 30 feet. See Wilsonville City Code 4.156.05-sub.01c. And whereas during the amendment, Wilsonville Code Section 4.181 was inadvertently missed and as a result directly conflicts with Section 4.156. And whereas the City of Wilsonville desires to correct the Scrivener's error in order to remove this inconsistency in the code, now therefore the City of Wilsonville ordains as follows. Wilsonville Code Section 4.181 is amended to remove the words "flagpole" to read as follows. Except as stipulated in Sections 4.800 through 4.804, height limitations specified elsewhere in this code shall not apply to barns, silos, or other farm buildings or structures on farms, to church spires, belfries, capolas, and domes, monuments, water towers, windmills, chimneys, smokestack, fire and hose towers, above-ground electric transmission, distribution, communication, and signal lines, towers and poles, and properly-screened mechanical and elevator structures. The City Recorder is directed to amend Wilsonville Code Section 4.181 as approved above and to make such format, style, and conforming changes to match the format and style of Chapter 4 of the Wilsonville City Code. Except to set forth above, Chapter 4 of the Wilsonville Municipal Code remains in full force and effect as written, submitted to the Wilsonville City Council and read for the first time at a regular meeting thereof on the 7th day of February 2022, commencing at the hour of 7:00 PM at the Wilsonville City Hall, 29799 Southwest Townsend or Loop East, Wilsonville, Oregon, and scheduled for second reading at the same hour in place.
And that should be corrected because since we have the full council here, we are going to do this in one reading. So everything that's read is correct except there will not be a second reading. Well, first and second reading are combined tonight.
Does that suffice in the way that it was corrected, counsel?
We'll just have to, before sign, we'll have to correct that language that the attorney just pointed out.
Yes, and when you all vote on this, then the person making the motion can indicate that this will be done in one reading. First and second reading are both occurring tonight.
I am now gonna call to order this hearing if that's my next step, Counsel West.
Yeah, my question got answered right there.
Oh, okay, okay. I call to order the Wilsonville City Council Public Hearing on Ordinance Number 856. Would you like me to read this aloud right now?
Yes, Your Honor.
This is a public hearing. If you may access the public hearing on Zoom as indicated. Webinar ID number 815-3605-6468. Please use the raise hand feature if you would like to speak or you can use the telephone and call 1-669-900-6833. Webinar ID number 815-3605-6468. And press *9 if you would like to speak. Or you can email the City Recorder I call to order the Wilsonville City Council Public Hearing on Ordinance Number 856 as has been read both in full and by title. In order to be enacted in one reading, the city council vote must be unanimous. If not unanimous, a second reading will be held on February 24, 2022. Ladies and gentlemen, the city council will be taking public testimony tonight during the public hearing. The hearing will be conducted in the following manner. First, city staff will present a report. Second, testimony by proponent, opponents, and those neither in favor nor against to the proposed ordinance. Although city council meetings are open to the public, the meeting may also be attended remotely in accordance with Oregon law. Information regarding how the public can attend this meeting remotely and give testimony is posted at City Hall and on the city's website and on the screen during this meeting. Notice was given that testimony could be submitted for the record in advance in writing by emailing or mailing it to the City Recorder. Testimony may be submitted in writing at any time prior to the closure of the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no further testimony in any form will be accepted. If you want to participate in this meeting remotely when the time for public testimony is called, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press *9 on your telephone if you'd like to testify or if you would like to notify the City Recorder you wish to submit written testimony. If you are having difficulties with these instructions, you may call the number on the screen, which I'll read again, 1-669-900-6833. And when prompted, enter webinar ID number 815-3605-6468. When called upon to testify, state your full name and address for the record unless you've already provided your address to the City Recorder. I request from those providing testimony not to repeat testimony that has already been given to the city council. Simply indicating that you agree with the prior testimony given by a speaker you identify is sufficient. If you wish to submit written testimony when called upon, email your testimony to the City Recorder. We'll provide copies to the council. Staff, please present your report.
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and councilors. My name for the record is Barbara Jacobson. I'm the city attorney. And I'm presenting tonight on behalf of Dan Pauley, who could not be here and is our planning manager. As was noted when the ordinance was read, this is a simple correction of a Scrivener's error. Back beginning in March of 2010, the planning staff went through a thorough process of revising the city's code in order to make it comply with changes in the law and also to clarify certain items that needed to be clarified. One of the things that was made clear in the code was that certain flagpoles could be exempt and in other locations, a flagpole could be at a maximum height of 5 feet. Most of the code section having to do with signage and flags is located in Section 4.156. Therefore, when the staff was making the revisions to the code, they inadvertently missed a section in 4.181, which also mentioned flagpoles and where a flagpole should have been removed. Specifically, Section 4.181 lists structures that are exempt from height limitations. And flagpoles used to be included in that section, but when the code was revised, flagpoles were addressed specifically in a different section. And so that should have been deleted. And that is all that this ordinance will do. Before, between fire and hose towers and above-ground electric transmission, the word "flagpoles" used to appear and they've simply been removed. And that is the whole purpose of this is just to make the code be consistent with itself. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do any members of the council have questions? Any members? So I'm hearing no questions from staff, and I will call for public testimony. Remember that to state your name and address for the record unless you've already given your address to the City Recorder and whether your testimony is in support, against, or neutral. Do we have any persons ready to testify?
We do now, Mayor.
Do any, I'll ask the council again since our testimony from the public is concluded. Do you have any further questions for staff or any other party who testified, which was none, before this public hearing is closed? Hearing no further questions and everyone having, no one has chosen to testify, we've closed that section. I hereby declare this public hearing closed. Do I have a motion on Ordinance 856? Council President Oquervall?
I'll make a motion and if there should be a changing in wording, I hope that our city attorney or assistant city attorney may be able to assist. But I move to adopt ordinance number 856 on first and second reading?
Yes, combined first and second reading. That's appropriate.
Combined, okay. Thank you.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that ordinance number 856 be adopted combining first and second readings tonight. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I am going to call for the, hearing no discussion or commentary, the motion has been made and seconded to enact Ordinance 856 in one single reading. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Any extensions? The motion passes unanimously on one reading, requiring no second reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to Resolution 2950. Will the city attorney please read the resolution?
Resolution Number 2950, Legislative Hearing, a resolution authorizing a supplemental budget adjustment for fiscal year 2021-2022.
Counselor West needs to excuse himself for a business matter. Thank you for attending.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
I call to order the, are we going to have a staff report on this first?
Yeah, there will be a brief one from Mr. Catco.
Yes, let me do that first.
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Keith Catco. I'm the city finance director. Like the mayor's mentioned, this is just a short introduction. The resolution before you establishes a budget for the construction of the Public Works Complex as approved per Resolution 2947 on January, or the last council session was, I'm not really sure, of January 20, 2022. This is a $22.5 million budget for construction with corresponding required transfers in funding from the General Fund, Water Operating Fund, Wastewater Operating Fund, and additional funding through debt proceeds. So it's a little bit of budgetary housekeeping for the approval of Public Works Complex construction. And that's the report.
Thank you. I call to order, well, before I call to order, let me ask the city council if you have any clarifying questions for the finance director. I'm not seeing any. So I'm really going to call to order the hearing on resolution, public hearing on Resolution Number 2950, as has been read. Ladies and gentlemen, the city council will be taking public testimony tonight during the public hearing. The hearing will be conducted in the following manner. The city staff will present a report, as we've just heard, testimony by proponents, opponents, and those neither in favor nor against the resolution. And although city council meetings are open to the public, this meeting may also be attended remotely in accordance with Oregon law. Information regarding how the public can attend this meeting remotely and give testimony is posted at City Hall and on the city's website. Notice was given that testimony could be submitted for the record in advance in writing by emailing or mailing it to the City Recorder. Testimony may be submitted in writing at any time prior to the closure of the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no further testimony in any form will be accepted. If you want to participate in the meeting remotely when the time for public testimony is called, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press *9 on your telephone if you would like to testify, or if you would like to notify the City Reporter you wish to submit written testimony. If you are having difficulties with those instructions, you may call the number on the screen, 1-669-900-6833, and when prompted, enter webinar ID number 815-3605-6468. When called upon to testify, state your name and address for the record. I request from those providing testimony not to repeat testimony that has already been given to the city council. Simply indicating that you agree with the prior testimony given by a speaker you identify is sufficient. You wish to submit written testimony when called upon, email your testimony to the City Recorder, who will provide copies to the council. Does any member of the council have any questions for staff about the staff report that we just heard? We talked about this at great length at our last meeting and in prior meetings. So hearing no more questions from staff, I will call for public testimony. Remember to state your name and address for the record and whether your testimony is in support, against, or neutral. Do we have anyone waiting to provide testimony?
We do not.
Do any, I'm just going to ask one more time, as we often do after we have the public testimony, if the council has any further questions for staff before this public hearing is closed. Hearing no further questions and seeing no one coming forward to testify, I hereby declare this public hearing closed. Do I have a motion for number, Resolution Number 2950? Council President Ockerbaum.
Move to approve Resolution 2950.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, that resolution, I'm going to restate the motion, it has been moved and seconded that we pass Resolution 2950. Is there any further discussion by the council? Hearing no discussion or commentary, I hereby call the question on the motion as made and seconded. Those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The motion passes four to zero. So that brings us to the mayor's business.
Your Honor, I believe it's three, zero.
I mean.
No, it's four.
Four, counting me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the motion passes four, zero. Thank you. Always happy to have assistance. It's easy to miss things. I'll move to mayor's business. As we all know, the legislature is in session, and it has convened for the even years, and this is a short session. And there's a lot going on that people may have been reading about from the city, the League of Oregon cities that we're involved with, and some of the councils, a lot of their meetings have been involved, and the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium as well have been reviewing legislation and considering testimony on potential bills that are going to be heard in House and Senate committees. Just give a little brief overview of one thing with that regard that we talked about tonight, and that is expanding broadband in Oregon. The city submitted testimony before the House Economic Recovery and Prosperity Committee supporting House Bill 4092, which provides a roadmap for improving statewide broadband internet telecommunications infrastructure and leverages federal funds. This bill also creates the Connecting Oregon Libraries Fund, which is a mechanism to obtain federal funds for broadband. Bill, and I will say that Wilsonville, as you heard earlier from Mr. Stone, continues to work with the cities of Sherwood and King City to expand broadband across our communities. And it's funded with a 2021 State American Rescue Plan Act state legislative allocation of $1.665 million by Representative Courtney Neron and Senator Kim Thatcher, so we will be watching that. The city was also invited by Representative Neron to submit an application for state capital construction support for the proposed Wilsonville Transit Center Transit Oriented Development Affordable Housing Project, which we have referred to often as the TOD project. The city staff have worked with consultants to identify a $1.9 million funding gap for the proposed ground floor tenant improvements of that building. These funds, if secured, would help provide ground floor improvements, including a smart transit information center and potential space for Wilsonville Community Sharing, our local food bank, and Social Services Referral Agency. So we likely won't know the outcome of this request until the end of the legislative season. Another thing that's been at the top of mind in activities has been the Oregon Transportation Commission's allocation of federal infrastructure funds. At the last week's Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, which we call the C4 Meeting, members discussed concerns over the Oregon Transportation Commission's letter of response to a December letter from the C4 Committee. This C4 letter that we all signed on to requested that ODOT advance the I-205 Abernathy Bridge Project now with the new federal funds from the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. It requested that they commit to mitigating highway traffic diversion onto local roads and delay implementing tolling on just I-205. In other words, the letter asked them to complete all of the tolling sections before implementing tolling, so that it's not concentrated in one area. The ODOT staff letter back to C4 to our request was basically noncommittal. And so you might recall that I also reported at the last meeting that Clackamas County Chair and city's mayor and the city also submitted comments. So we've been quite vocal about this, and we've decided to reissue our letter with some crisper points and request a direct response. We have, our comments also recommend advancing the I-5 Boone Bridge and seismic improvement project course, as well as making significant transit improvements for the South Metro region. And you may hear later from Counselor Lindvill and Council President Ockerbaum about the Westland-Wilsonville School District Diversity Equity and Inclusion Summit, which we all attended. It was a very good session. And I'm also going to report about the Clackamas County Business Alliance, which I attend, and they just held a legislative summit. It was a very good discussion. They had over a dozen local area state legislators. They all spoke about policy priorities that they had for this 2022 short session. Primary areas of current concern that we heard about included, from me and from other mayors, was support for affordable housing and home ownership programs, needing help addressing homelessness, and improving workforce development programs. So we're all hoping to have activity in that regard. I think I will leave the Citizens Academy and the Budget Committee for others to talk about, and will note that the city, we are working on seating people on the new commission that's going to be set up for City of Wilsonville Arts Cultural Heritage. We had 14 applications for nine positions, and I'm starting interviews on those next And I think that that is everything that I have. A minute, please, and I'm going to move on to our presentation by the city attorney, or by, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Lee here.
I was just calling, I'm just going to speak to say, to correct you, because you left out one thing, and that is, I thought that you provided brilliant testimony on House Bill 4063.
Yes.
Substantial completion. And I thought the letter was succinct, but really covered all of the important points, and I'm guessing you might have had a small amount of staff assistance on this, but nonetheless, it was, I thought it was a brilliant letter.
Yes, thank you. I did skip over that. I think I was trying to keep the meeting moving, but we did share that with the councilors, and we are standing up for home rule and for our ability to manage processes effectively in short, and that letter is expressing our point.
And I'm presuming that we are solid here with the League of Oregon Cities on this?
I believe so, yes. That's all. Okay, thank you. That brings us to a presentation by Ms. Bill Aguana about the city attorney position profile.
Thank you. My name is Andrea Aguana. I'm the Human Resources Manager for the City of Wilsonville. And before you, you have the position profile for the city attorney recruitment. We've discussed that length in December. What council and other stakeholders would like to see as characteristics and/or skills and attributes of a new city attorney, being that our current city attorney, Ms. Barbara Jacobson, is retiring at the end of March. We started this recruitment process, just opened the recruitment, actually, January 27th, and have received quite a bit of interest thus far. So the profile before you is something that has been sent out to council, and we are looking to see if council can provide us a final approval of the profile in order to move forward withholding interviews and executive session for the candidates who were selected for the interview process.
We have, we have all received that and have been invited to speak with you about that individually, and this is our chance now to, if there's any member of the council who wants to add any more input.
Right, yes. And we also have scheduled interviews for the week, the first week of March, and it's currently set for the third and the fourth of March in the afternoon between 12:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. We scheduled two days to ensure that we had sufficient time if we had several candidates that we wanted to speak to. So we have two days scheduled, approximately 12 hours, it sounds like a lot of time, but you'll want to spend enough time with these candidates to understand their background and also their interest in the position.
Right. Well, thank you. I'm not seeing any hands raised. Tell me if I'm missing anybody, but I think we've, oh, I do see a hand raised, Council President Ockerbaum.
Thank you, and, you know, thank you for sending out this information to us in advance so that we could review and have dialogue on any questions that we have. I wondered if you could just briefly share what we might expect as far as communication over the next couple of weeks leading up to those interview days that have been reserved as far as with council and knowing how things are going, I guess, right?
So I can provide as much communication as council would like from me regarding the recruitment process, regarding applications, how much interest we've received, where we've posted, but we will have a set time during the council meeting, I believe it's the 24th, Thursday, the 24th. We'll have some time set aside in executive session to discuss the candidates who meet qualifications, but also who are the top candidates for the position. I have been sending, for those who've applied already, I've been sending those candidates supplemental questions to answer, to provide us with more information about their background, their skills, and also what characteristics they would bring to this position that match what we're looking for. So we would take probably, I'm estimating about an hour during that work session to review applications and select candidates that council would want to interview on the third and the fourth. Thank you for the additional information there.
So, thank you. That'd be great to keep us apprised of that. I mean, like, weekly, just a summary of the volume of applications and how it's looking. I wanted to add, as a part of mayor's business, something that I meant to say, and that is the date of our next meeting. is the date of our next meeting. Because of the President's Day holiday, we will be meeting on Thursday, February 24th, is our next meeting. And there are a lot of other meetings listed in the, in the meeting package that I won't go over verbally. So it's at that next meeting that we'll be discussing this again. So thank you very much. And that's, oh, Councilor Lindvill.
I just have a clarification. The first, in the notice, it indicated the first review. And so I'm just wondering what the process will be for, for us to, for council members to review the applications ahead of the council meeting?
So how human resources handles these recruitment processes, just in general for the city, is we will conduct the first screening of applicants to ensure that the top candidates are the candidates that are put forth in front of council. So I will be providing those applications to council to review prior to the meeting that we'll hold on the 24th. And that way, you would be able to review the information in order to have an in-depth discussion about those candidates.
Okay. And then, and then the finalist interviews are indicated February 28 through the 4th, but I think you indicated something else in terms of the days that we would actually conduct them. So I'm wondering about time. I just want to reserve that on my calendar.
Yes, we have selected the third and the fourth as the two days for interviews, and I can amend the profile to reflect those two days.
And so should we, should we set aside the entire two days? I mean, from, from 8:00 in the morning until 5:00 o'clock at night, or?
So we're thinking half days. A whole day of interviews can be very difficult. It's a lot of time to spend going through interview processes. So I would anticipate and have scheduled between 12:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. And that should provide you with ample time for at least seven candidates.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And could you please invite all of us to that on an Outlook calendar, that block of time, and then we can just-
Certainly.
-replace it with details when we get there?
I will, yes, thank you.
Okay, that was great. Any other questions?
I will be sending you also some interview questions to consider as part of the interview process. Typically, a hiring manager or the council would determine which questions would be pertinent for this type of recruitment. So I'll send you sample interview questions that you could ask during the interview process.
Council President Ockerbaum. Sorry, one last thing. When using that information, if you could also send us the supplemental questions that they, or, you know, what we already have information on that way, be helpful in envisioning some of that dialogue, I guess.
Certainly.
Thank you.
We've got plenty of time if there's anything else. This is, this is an important time to bring up anything else that would be useful. I think we've got it.
All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, Aguana, thank you. That brings us to our communications segment of our agenda with Ms. Baylor regarding the compost bucket update.
Good evening. My name is Erica Baylor. I work as the Recreation Coordinator for the Parks and Rec Department. And tonight, I'm just going to give you a brief presentation about the compost bucket project that we had going. So I'm going to share my screen. All right, so this project, it was initially a, it's funded through the Wilsonville Metro Community Enhancement Grant, and it was originally an order of compost buckets that we were going to be giving out to the community. And that piece did stay, but we also decided to add some community programming around the compost buckets. So this is just going to give you a little overview of what we did and kind of the community's feedback of the project. And so in addition to the compost bucket giveaway, we did also do some educational activities. We did three different Zoom webinars. We did an in-person verma composting class, which is composting with worms. One of our Parks Maintenance Specialists, Chris Delk, ran that class, and at the end of it, all of the participants also got one of the Wilsonville branded compost buckets. The library also did a compost themed storytime, where at the end of the storytime, they handed out the buckets. So kind of a lot of different community and enrichment classes surrounding the theme of composting that kind of played in nicely to the compost bucket handout. We also did a lot of giveaways. So the initial, the initial count that we had, I believe, was 500 buckets, compost buckets, and we needed to figure out how we were going to get them distributed to the community. So we did that a number of different ways. We did some handouts at various buildings, including the library, the Parks and Rec Admin Office, and the community center. So all three buildings had a couple hundred buckets, and we scheduled days and times that folks could come in and pick those up. We also organized a compost bucket handout at the Harvest Festival. So any of you that were at the Harvest Festival might have seen a tent up there with a compost bucket handout. And I will say, each bucket, they were nicely logoed with the city logo, but we also handed out some informational material to go with it that kind of described how to use the bucket, where do you put your compost once it's full, those kind of things, how you could opt in for a yard debris bin, et cetera. So, and these were just some of the highlights of the webinar. So kind of a side bonus of this project is we got to meet some really cool people. So I did a couple of different webinars with Rob Kappa, who's a master recycler and a master gardener, and he did some workshops about recycling do's and don'ts, which was tying in with the theme. And then Jack Short did an at-home composting presentation about how you can use your compost in your own garden at home. And he's also a master gardener, so it was really lovely to work with both of them, and I think some good connections for the city to have moving forward. And the library did some really great programming, as they always do. They had a really great window display at the library with all sorts of compost-themed books and activities. There's a nice picture of all the different educational class handouts that we had that went along with the compost buckets. And then they also did another webinar with master recycler, Chris Bamar. So a bunch of different opportunities. Those were all done via Zoom, so the community could, yeah, Charlotte.
Sure. So of these presentations that you've done with these master gardeners, master recyclers, et cetera, are those available on the city website or on YouTube, or somebody wanted to go find them?
Yeah, so they are up on our YouTube page. I think that it's organized in the Parks and Rec playlist, so to speak. I know that the ones with Jack Short and Rob Kappa are. I'd have to double check with the library if they've got the recording with the, the one with Chris, but it should be still available for you to watch.
Thank you.
And so the overall result, some of the observations that we saw, the community seemed really excited. I mean, they're always excited about free stuff, but they love getting compost buckets, and we had people coming in for weeks picking them up. Everyone was really happy with the overall quality of them, which was great feedback to hear. Most of the people that were coming in already had a green yard debris collection bin, and others were happy that they could opt in, as that was part of the point behind this project, was to create awareness around the yard debris collection that we have in the City of Wilsonville. We did hear a lot of feedback about folks that are living in apartment complexes and how they would love an opportunity to compost, but that a lot of the apartment complexes in town don't have that option, which was good feedback to hear. I know, I know it's, it's hard for those communities sometimes to opt into a program like that, but that was kind of a major thing that we heard. And exciting, we did have a community, Silver Lake Neighborhood Council in Los Angeles reached out. I don't know how they heard about our program, but they did. And they were really excited about the idea of spreading this kind of awareness around composting and recycling and wanted to sort of mimic our program. So I spoke with someone from the Neighborhood Council, and I think they're going to get started soon, so that was kind of a cool connection. And then something else that's really great that's coming up, I'm going to be a master gardener. So hopefully, I got into the program and it starts next week, so hopefully, moving forward, I'll also be able to provide some more of that master gardener education for us to be in-house, which will be great. And that's really it. Are there any questions?
I was just asking, that picture, oh, am I jumping off the top of you? Sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
On the picture just prior to this, when you were giving them out in those boxes, where, did we also have onsite cardboard recycling there? Because that was a huge pile of cardboard building up there. So I'm presuming we were showing also that we're recycling the cardboard.
Yeah, I know for, for our Parks and Rec Admin Office, we pre-unboxed a lot of them in anticipation of a lot of people coming through, so we did most of that, that collection, yeah.
Okay, yeah. I mean, it's just another opportunity to show people, and here's where the cardboard can go.
Right, right.
Council President Ockerbaum.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to comment and say, you know, thank you for the presentation, the information in our packets. And it strikes me, we had, in our work session, we had a bit of a conversation about collaboration between some of our, our boards and our committees. And while I think that conversation was framed a bit differently, this, this really presents a great example of a, of a wonderful collaboration that's happened with our staff, you know, with the library and Parks and Rec staff. And I just wanted to show my appreciation for that, because I think it brings a power that reaches even greater segment of our community, you know? And so thank you for, for doing that collaboration and for working together and really expanding the reach of such a cool program like this, and, you know, doing the extra steps, like the storytime and the coordination of that all. I think it magnifies the impact, so it's really terrific to see. Thank you.
Thank you.
And to bring that-
I would agree.
Go ahead, Mayor, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
I was just going to say, to bring it even more full circle, that was a, program was made possible by a Metro Enhancement Grant, which is also a standing committee of the city, which also the mayor and Councilor Lindvill sit on.
Yeah, yeah, true. Very cool. And I, I have, we have one of these recycling buckets at home, and not everybody was that excited about it the first day we had it. Like, they thought it was going to be a lot of work, but it turned out it's really easy, and we're just totally into it now. And I don't know if you can remember, I don't remember the volume. I'm putting you on the spot for a statistic, but, but when you think about, you know, two people in a household could fill one of those up in a week easily. And then if, if you weren't putting it in recycling, it goes in plastic bags, it ends up in a landfill, and yes, vegetables decay, lettuce and banana peels decay, but not very well when they're stacked under some grotesque number of pounds of plastic bags.
Right.
And I remember they had a statistic about the volume decrease that can be brought to a landfill by more people using these. I don't know if you have that, or maybe it's how many years it doesn't decay.
Yeah, I don't have that statistic offhand, but it wouldn't surprise me if we have the same bucket at home. And it doesn't surprise me that you're, half of what you're throwing out could be putting, put into compost, so.
And, and the other thing that we heard recently at a presentation by Council President Lynn Peterson, a meeting that I went to where she was talking about the difficulties they had with trucking garbage through eastern Oregon during the labor shortage and all kinds of other things that happened, and they couldn't, they couldn't haul it for a while, weather and other things. I think people forget that when you just toss it in the trash, it's actually being, somebody is going to actually drive it to another part of the state. And so here is a way that we can reduce that volume of material. And I, I just, I don't know if this is where you were going, Council President Ockerbaum, but perhaps if we still have some of those buckets that have not been used, we could try bringing them, see if it fits into the schedule of our retreat that we're having with the council boards, and it might be a fun icebreaker or something. Anybody who doesn't have one could take it, and it's quite easy.
I will say we have handed all of them out.
Oh, you have? That's amazing. That's great.
Yeah, they were gone in probably the first month.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Yeah, they were very popular.
Well, great. Well, success. Well, thanks very much, Ms. Baylor.
Yeah, thank you.
And now that we've heard about that happy subject, we will talk about learning about other helpful tips, everything we can do to improve public safety as citizens and people who, residents, people who live and work here, from Chief Rob Wurks. Wurks.
You're on mute, Rob.
Thank you. It's always helpful when that's off, right?
Right.
Thank you, everyone. I want to take some time tonight, and I'll fire the, the presentation up here in a moment, but it's good to be in front of you, mayor and council, and anybody from the public that's listening. I just wanted to check in real quick. We're going to go over just real quick the, the details of, just a general overview of the contract, where we are with staffing, and then we'll get into some crime prevention tips, and we'll try to keep this high level for everybody. There we go. So we'll get started. I know the mayor and council are familiar with the contract to the city and the depth of service, but I always like to highlight that because I think it's important. I think it's very valuable. Essentially, it gives the small city police that we have here the resources of a, of a big county. And just for some examples here, for those that aren't familiar, Wilsonville Police is a contract service with the East Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, a partnership. As you can see in some of the lists and photos here, it brings with it a lot of resources. Canine patrols, which come out here, search and rescue, which comes out to help us. We actually had a case today where we had a missing child just for a moment, thankfully, but they can come help us with things like that. SWAT teams, planes, drones, accident reconstruction, forensic reconstruction, and trauma intervention programs, and a chaplain. All these programs are great and come with that county service. This is just a quick overview of our current staffing situation. The chief at the top, then we have three supervisors. The day shift has a motorcycle. Three officers are fantastic, Community Service Officer Julie Fanger. We have a school resource officer and two detectives. And again, all these resources dedicated specifically to us. For swing shift, we have another supervisor, another traffic officer, and then four patrol officers, and then we have a graveyard shift supervisor with four officers. That brings us to 21. We have a national, another additional officer pending January of '23, so we're welcoming them aboard. And then also this year, we're excitedly working on a mental health clinician, which we're also very excited about. So we recently, we had an incident in the Villabon area where we had a guy who went around slashing tires. We slashed quite a few tires, and it caused quite a stir in the community, which I would understand, because that would be a very unpleasant experience. And it's expensive, and it causes concern about where we are with crime. And so I would, just looking at property crimes specifically, what I did here is I just went and took a quick peek back for the last two years, quarter by quarter, and I've been trying to, we try to monitor the increase, percentage increase and percentage decrease we see over time, so we can kind of monitor when we're seeing a massive spike. And also, it's a nice measurement tool to see whether our, whatever resources we throw at that make a difference and perhaps reducing it to some degree. a difference, and perhaps reducing it to some degree. But as we look back to 2020 over the quarters, we saw a 13% increase in 2020. And then in 2021, we only saw a 2.4% increase. And so what that tells me is overall, that particular, in property crimes, is pretty flat. One thing about property crimes, as we're discussing this, it's important to realize, this includes all property crimes. So not only the thing that we steal off someone's porch, or steal out of someone's car, this includes breaking into homes, stealing the car fully, shoplifters at Kohl's, or some of our other Costco, places like that. It also includes fraud, credit card fraud. So there's a lot that goes into property crime, not just the theft that we get really concerned about or that we see. Comparatively, I also looked at what the county saw in that two-year period, just to kind of see where we compare and adjusted for numbers, because we're just looking at percent increase here. So in 2020, the county was quite similar to where we are, we're in 2020 in Wilsonville, which is around 13%, almost 14%. But for the county in 2021, if my math is, 10% increase. That's pretty significant. So we're, we're doing okay, holding the line, crime-wise, in here in Wilsonville. I like these four Ds of crime prevention. They're, they're simple. These are just kind of the start, and I'll get into more detail. But when we're looking at, one thing I want to encourage folks to do is take a moment. Our lives get pretty busy, and we get very programmed, or just, we go to work, we come home, you know, there's all these things we're doing. But I just want to encourage everybody to stop and really just take a look at your property. How is your house set up? How is your lighting set up? And where are you parking your cars? What are we leaving in our cars? Do we have cameras in our homes? So really, just kind of stop and take a moment to really just do a self-assessment of where you personally are, and then maybe analyze, where should we be headed? What can I do better? Right? Because the bottom line is, despite our best efforts, the police just can't, we can't do this alone. We can't do all crime prevention alone. And we do give it our, our best try. So we want to make sure we deny opportunities, you know, and that's where we can park inside a garage, not leave things on the porch, not leave things in the vehicle. And then really also, when we talk about delay, that's when we talk about ways, delay and deter, it kind of makes those two together. That's when we can look at, what kind of landscaping do we have? Do we have bushes or shrubs that make it difficult to get to a window, for example? Then we also talk about detection, where, and that's where we're doing better. Technology has helped us this way. We've got lots in the way of Ring cameras and other camera devices that can be displayed, obviously, which kind of acts as a deterrent, or a detection device when there is. And then along with detection devices also comes things like audible alarms, things of that nature. So those are just some of the prevention tips we have here. I'll get into more detail. If we're talking about car break-ins, which is one of the petty theft things we see a lot, if at all possible, keep your car in a closed, locked garage. I can't, I can't encourage that enough. Really rethink about how we're, how you're doing your storage. I can tell you, I keep my cars in the garage. It's nice, it's always warm, it never gets iced over, and it doesn't get broken into. So think about that if it's possible. And I know we all love to have our stuff, and obviously, a lot of stuff goes in the garage, but I really highly encourage that. When that's not possible, one thing we really encourage is keeping area well lit, and motion lights are great. It's energy-saving, and doesn't come on unless it detects movement. And then when there's movement, it comes on, which can create a little bit of a shock factor for potential thieves. And then thieves do like dark and concealment, more so than they like brightly lit areas. And I don't want to talk, this last one makes me want to tell a story, and I know that when we're trying to communicate messages, storytelling's valuable. So going back a few years, when we were monitoring some crime trends, we saw a significant spike in theft. And it was enough that we really were concerned about it. We started mapping it, we dedicated extra resources to it, to include unmarked cars and undercover folks. And our interventions worked that time. And we stopped a car, and it was full of stolen goods, and there was a couple people in it. And that led to a search warrant of an apartment where we believed a bunch of the stole's items were, and they in fact were there. And I share this story because I've seen a lot in my years in policing, but when I walked into this apartment, I was blown away by what they had gotten away with, in terms of people's property. They were rather organized, that was unusual, but we saw bins full, you can see in one of the pictures, a bin full of prescription medications, up until including, you know, diazepam and opioids, you know, some powerful drugs that really shouldn't be ever left in a vehicle. There was bins that were full of electronic devices, iPads, digital cameras, computers, cell phones. In one bin, it was all wallets, passports, IDs, birth certificates, you name the documentation. I was just rather shocked by what people were leaving in their cars to be stolen. And this, again, you can see some of the photos of, that's just a smidgen of the photos that we had of that crime scene, and that was, that was a big deal. We had more than 100 victims we identified, and we were able to track some of those down. But again, I think the point of this is, how much was able to be stolen simply because it was left in the car? In some cases, the garage doors were left open, and they weren't afraid to reach into the threshold of the garage to steal items. So my whole point of this story is just to really encourage people to be very mindful and thoughtful about, about what they're leaving in their. Councilor Lee Han.
I ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, a couple of items that are in almost everybody's car, that it seems to me, I haven't ever heard about, whether you should or shouldn't leave them in there. One is the car registration, and one is the remote opener for your garage door. Because if somebody steals your remote opener, they have access really to your garage and your house. And everybody's car has got a garage door opener in it. I mean, do, is that ever an issue? And if they, and if you park your car somewhere not by your house, and they also can get the registration, which is usually right in the visor, now they have your address and your opener.
Councilor Lee Han, you're stealing all my thunder here.
Oh, but I don't see that in your thing here.
Yeah, I know. It was definitely, I'm glad you brought that up, because it is something I wanted to talk about. And I can tell you firsthand, I have seen cars getting broken into, the garage door opener taken, and entry made into those homes via that method. So I'm glad you brought that up. It is important to think about, again, what are we leaving in the cars? Garage door openers are a big one. The information, registration, insurance, you know, we require those to be driving around, and we do want to have those when you get stopped. And so just be mindful of where we're keeping that, how readily accessible is it? Or, like I do, I keep mine in a specific envelope that's to the side, or sometimes just concealed somewhere in the car where it's not super obvious. They don't typically go through cars in great details, generally very quick. But you're absolutely correct. Those are things we recommend not leaving in your car.
Yeah, because that, that gives them access to your house.
Yes.
Not just the camera on the backseat. But the other, the other dilemma I always have is lock your car or don't lock your car. Because I have had my car broken into twice in my lifetime, not in this jurisdiction. Both times, they break a window. Now I have a big bill, even though I have nothing in the car of value, but they broke the window, and now I've got a $300, whatever, probably now, it's probably more like $500, to fix the darn thing. So should I just leave my car void of values and leave it unlocked, so they can just open the door, look around, see there's nothing there, and leave without breaking my window? So that's another question. I mean, a debate I have with myself.
You are not alone. I too have this debate. And so I don't have a specific answer for you, but I will tell you this. Anecdotally, what we've been seeing is an upward trend in just trying the car door to see if it's unlocked or not.
Right.
We're seeing far less of the window breaking than we used to, because it does, it creates a lot of noise, becomes very obvious, it triggers people to look, or a homeowner to hear it. So we're seeing a lot, it's not that it doesn't happen, but we're seeing a lot less of that. So then it does kind of lend itself to maybe you should leave your car unlocked, because then people just go through it, shut the door, and leave, and nothing's damaged. So I can't advocate either way, because I just haven't dug in the data deep enough to, sorry, I wish I could answer that for you more cleanly, but that's what we have there.
These things keep me awake nights, you know.
You're not alone there either. So that's kind of the story of the Tweedles, and kind of my encouragement. That literally was their last name. It's kind of a funny name to the story, but they were both named, last name of Tweedle.
Well, I have a question. Is this photograph under the garage, is that the contents of somebody's garage, or is that what the thieves had in their apartment?
That's the picture of our property room when we were trying to organize everything we found.
Okay. Amazing, amazing.
Yeah. We tried, and then we had to lay it out, and had, you know, called on the victims to come do a viewing, to see if they could claim their property. It was, it was a very big deal, the biggest.
Well, let's celebrate. That, I mean, I know that was a few years ago, but I have heard you talk about that story, and I think it's worth telling again and again, because I remember hearing it, it was solved because of a number of factors, including a lot of people reporting details that you could string together to make the arrest.
Correct. Yeah, that's a great point. It's very true. And anything people can do to make items identifiable, you know, having those, because often we both, self-included, being guilty of this, I may not necessarily, I haven't been awesome at necessary photographing or documenting serial numbers of high-dollar items like iPads or things of that nature. And then I also wanted to throw this resource out there. Sarah McClurg is an awesome human being, and she works for the Hupacamas County Sheriff's Office, but she's done quite a few presentations out here in Wilsonville. I know she's been in the Villablea area, several HOAs, she's been out to Charbonneau, and she is just a wonderful person and an excellent resource technically for talking about theft, crime prevention generally. She goes, she can do separate things like online safety programs, general safety programs, neighborhood, community programs, all that stuff. And I have her contact information there. You can contact her, phone or email to schedule to her to come and speak. She likes to do groups typically, the bigger the better. But she comes to our community center frequently to talk about online fraud prevention, which is also a big, big thing we deal with as well.
Does she, with, I had a question. I know she spoke to some neighborhoods recently, and I think it was by, well, one was at a, at a large, they were gonna do it in a gym, but they may have converted to online. So how's that working? Can she do this presentation through Zoom, or does she prefer in person?
I, if you, I can't speak for her. I think she prefers in person. I think we all agree with her communications. But she certainly can for high-risk kind of folks to do on some online stuff as well.
Thank you. Well, I've heard really good reviews of people who have heard her recently, and people have given a lot of good feedback to, you know, neighbors getting together and just reinforcing all these steps, like you said, deny, delay, detect, and deter. Because we're never gonna have, you know, 47 police officers standing every couple of blocks to watch everything 24/7.
Agreed. Yeah, that's, that's true. So we're kind of in this together, and so I'm glad to have the opportunity to talk about how we can work together on some, to prevent some of these issues, and make ourselves a little bit less of a target. Talk about how we monitor trends and try to respond to trends we see.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you, Chief.
Well, it looks like Councilor Ockervall has a question.
Oh, I missed it again.
No, it's okay. I just snuck in there right at the end. Thank you so much for your, for your presentation, for sharing this information. And you did mention, I think just briefly, the Ring doorbell cams or, you know, things like that. And I'm wondering, what sort of role do you see that playing in maybe preventing, you know, people to be a target, or helping solve things? And if people have questions as far as like, how it should be set up, or if this is the right thing, you know, for their residence layout, is that something that you can also help with? Or what are the resources, I guess, around, around those types of questions?
Yeah, I tell you, the, I'm not super technology inclined myself, but I will say, I talk about them because it's my personal experience. And they're super, it's about as user-friendly as it can be. It really helps people set this up. We had some folks that were kind of at-risk folks that we helped set up the Ring camera with. Of course, they have tech. There's lots of other cameras. The other thing I'd like to touch on for Ring, which is interesting, it can help us in many ways. At an event, we can make, we can reach out to Ring and see, and then they can reach out to camera owners in that area to see if we've missed anything, or there's something they can help us with, even on cases that they're not necessarily involved in. So it's a great tool for helping solve things, even in small and large cases.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilor Lee Han.
I just wanted to circle back on the tire slashing thing, which everybody heard about in Villablea, and what the follow-up was on that with the neighbors and, or whatever you can tell us about the outcome of that. It's a tricky one, because unlike thefts, where you see people are after something, that, that seems like, what's the point of? That seems like a lot of work for no return.
Yeah, which is frustrating, not only for the victims of this crime, but for us as well. So I know that we had, 16 people got ahold of us. I know sometimes people don't get ahold of us, and as always, I encourage people, if you've been the victim of crime, please, please reach out to us. We will do what we can to solve it. But there's also, on the backend of this, there's also, we have to, as I showed you the numbers earlier, it's important that we are looking at the right numbers, right? Without people reporting what's happening, then we're not, we're not getting a true picture. So that part aside, the, we did have some leads on that. I haven't had a chance to catch up with that, definitely. That's where, that's assigned to that case. That case is still open. I know that we had some leads on a potential suspect, but I haven't seen him since last week to see where we are, whether we've had, whether we've firmly identified that suspect and had a chance to interview him. Pretty sure about that part. So, so I don't have an answer. That's where we're at with the case. It's still open, we're still investigating. We do have a lead, and as far as I know right now, we haven't, we haven't closed that case just yet.
Well, it just had occurred to me about, you know, when you're talking about Ring, you know, if they were in, if the occurrences were all in a similar neighborhood, you know, three or four blocks, to coordinate those Ring cameras, so they're viewing the street, or they're viewing where it was, if they, if there was any sort of neighborhood watch follow-up with those neighborhoods where that occurred.
Well, one thing we did do, the mayor and I got to meet with a bunch of the HOA presidents, where we talked a little bit more in greater detail about that case, and in greater detail about crime prevention as well. So we have had some community follow-up, which I thought went very well. And then, yes, we're also looking for those Ring cameras. This is exactly that type of case I was talking about, where potentially someone, we've got that as well.
How they orient their camera makes a difference, you know.
Correct. That's true.
See the, the street, a bit of the street, as well as your porch.
Yeah, and making those just, just right can be a little bit of a, little bit of work, but generally, not too hard to do.
Well, I really appreciate you coming to the city council meeting, Chief Werks, and the, the meeting that we had on video, a video meeting with a number of HOA chairs that we could find on short notice. And we wanted to hold that meeting as soon after we heard about that event as we could. And I think it really helped clarify, you know, what happened, the numbers that were reported. And always, we want people to feel encouraged to report crimes when they see them, or think they see them at the time that they're observing something.
Right. And just to top that off, too, it's the, we've been preaching the see something, say something. I mean, people are familiar with people in their neighborhood, with vehicles in their neighborhood. So if you see that car that just looks out of place, and is going too slow, and looking around too much, you know, those type of things, or folks that seem to be doing odd behaviors, we're happy to come check on those. People always say, oh, we know you're so busy, we don't want to bother you. Like, please bother us, we're literally here for that. So give us that call, let us check that out.
Okay, well, if there are no other questions- Okay, well, if there are no other questions, I guess we'll let you get back to work.
Thank you all so much.
You can have the rest of the evening off. Thank you, Chief Wurps.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, so that brings us to councillor, actually, citizen input and community announcements. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on items not on the agenda. It's also a time to address items that are on the agenda but are not scheduled for a couple of hearings. Staff in the city council make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizens' input before tonight's meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And use the raise hand feature of Zoom to let us know if you'd like to provide comments. Do we have anyone waiting?
We do not, Mayor.
Thank you. That will bring us to councillor comments, liaison reports, and meeting announcements, starting with Council President Akavol.
Thank you. Um, let's see, the last few weeks, a couple items that have happened, I believe the mayor already referenced briefly the DEI summit that was hosted by the school district, and I was able to attend that, as I believe Councillor Lindell was there as well, and she may have some items to share about that. But we were able to hear from Colt Gill, who's the director of ODE, and then also Bill De La Cruz was a speaker in the evening, and of course, he's helped City of Wilsonville in doing some facilitation with our own DEI committee with the city. And I appreciated being able to be there for that meeting, and as well as there was, let's see, a Willamette Intake Facility Commission meeting that evening that I attended, and we had a report, actually, this, this is good information for us to have. We had kind of an update on some of the work that has been happening, the construction that's been happening down there by the intake facility plant and the park specifically that's right there, by the intake facility. And the report that the commission received said that, you know, they've been able to keep on schedule for that, and the Phase One construction should be complete by February 24th. So that's, that's what, that's like two weeks away or something. So we're getting close, and that was good news to hear. The, some of that topsoil is going to be moved back into position, and park restoration happening, and good to hear that they were able to keep on schedule for that work. Let's see, we also elected a new chair and a vice chair for the group. So John Goodhouse of Tigard will serve as chair, and then I actually will serve as vice chair for that Willamette Intake Facilities Commission during this coming year. And then, let's see, we had the, the Wilsonville Civics Academy meeting, and that's always a great opportunity to interact with some of the leaders and interested people in our city that want to learn more about our city and more about the operation. So I always appreciate that. And Councillor Leehan does a fantastic presentation about history of the city and kind of framing it up in a unique and educational way too. So that, that's good to, to hear her presentation, and maybe she'll share a little about that. And then our budget committee meeting, that was just last week, and that was a mid-year review with our budget committee, so kind of like a, a mid-year checkup on where we're at, and news was positive. And I believe those meetings are recorded and available to the public too, and then we will look forward to meeting again to set the next budget this May, and just in a couple of months here. And so that's kind of been my activity for the last few weeks. One thing that, that I'm looking forward to doing, I believe it's this week, it was later this week, on Wednesday, is I'm going to join one of the Zoom calls that is going on, I think there's a series of them, so people can probably find out about opportunities that are, are yet to happen on the calendar, but there's one happening this Wednesday with the Kitakata Committee, and then some students that are in Kitakata, I believe they are fifth, sixth grade students that are doing some language practice. So I'm looking forward to participating in that and hearing from some of those students later this week. That should be a lot of fun. And that is it for me for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Leehan. I think you're muted. Still muted.
I don't quite know what, what is expected on this reporting. I'm supposed to report everything important I did, but, or just interesting things I did, or what. But yes, I, I did the history presentation for the Citizens Academy, I was at the budget committee meeting, and whatever. And the state committees that I'm on, we had the quarterly meeting of the Oregon Commission on Historic Cemeteries, we had the quarterly meeting of the State Heritage Tree Committee, and the monthly meetings of Willamette Falls and Landings, Heritage Association, Heritage Coalition, and the Management and Operations Committee, which, of, of that, which I am also on. So let's just say, I, I am on way too many committees, too many, but go to too many meetings. But the funner thing that I had done, not that the history thing isn't fun, because it's always fun doing history, but we got our, this project I'm doing for the cemetery, which I threw the background up on me, that made it to the front page of the paper a week or so ago, of trying to track down the Bakers, who are a couple of people in Pleasant View Cemetery who were born in the 1700s, which is a long time ago, unusual for people out, out here to be that old. And they have no marker. So I'm working with various people, Baker descendants around the country to rectify that. And that's not the only one. I'm also working on Captain Short, William Penn Short, who is one of the steamboat captains we have up there, who's also in an unmarked grave along with his family members. So these are, are research things that become, you know, just big projects as you start to try to tie down facts before you get them in there, before you carve them into granite, is what I'm meaning. And, and then I did invite the State Cemetery Commission to have, hold their first in-person meeting since the pandemic here in Wilsonville at the, I mean, and go to our cemetery in July. So they have never been out here, so that, that would, those are people from around the state who would be coming for that event in July. So we'll be trying to get things looking all pretty and so on and so forth. So that's, that's an upcoming thing.
Well, that is a great report. That's just the kind of thing that we want to hear about. All of our councillors are asked to go to certain committees and meetings, and not that we're desperate to attend meetings, we need you to do that, and that's how we get things done and get our council goals done. And some of the meetings are quite long, but they require bringing our goals for us and then reporting back and speaking up for Wilsonville. So thank you. And that brings us to Councillor Lindell.
Well, I, I attended many of the same meetings that you folks did, including the Equity Summit, the Civics Academy, and the mid-year budget review. I, I really think that, I really appreciate that the Westland Wilsonville School District actually did the Equity Summit, and that they had the superintendent and some of their board members who participated. And I, I think, I think it was a, a good, it was a good event for, for us locally. I know that the Lake Otzweigle School District has done something similar, so I was pleased to see that the Westland Wilsonville School District was doing that as well. I also attended Congressman Schrader's Community Leader Roundtable on the 26th, and that was, that was fairly well-attended by many of our colleagues in our neighboring communities. And there were questions, of course, about tolling and about monies that might be available, infrastructure monies to take care of the Abernathy Bridge and to deal with transit. And so I was pleased about that as well. And then on the 3rd of February, I attended the Oregon Aviation Board Meeting, which was a fairly uneventful meeting as it relates to our issues and concerns that we have here in Wilsonville. So I, I believe that the next PAC meeting, Councillor Leehan attends those, and so I think that should be coming up here before too long. And then the Lake of Oregon Cities has started their conference calls for leaders on Fridays again, and those are really informative. And, you know, the one thing, whether it is our congressional folks, or whether it's our, our local county and city folks, one of the things that I am very impressed with is that there seems to be support for us to deal with the, for ODOT to deal with the issues related to tolling. And I, you know, I, I'm impressed that from the congressional level down to the local level that we are all on the same page. And I think Congressman Wyden is also speaking out about the concerns about I-205 and tolling and not having our section of 205 bear the burden of, of collecting tolls for all of the infrastructure. So it's, it's really nice to see that, that all kind of be supported across the board. And that is really it, and it's just a little bit of a busy time, really, six or seven meetings to attend, and still nothing in person, so.
Well, we're not giving up, that's coming, I know it will. Thank you, Councillor Lindell, and that will bring us to our consent agenda, if the city attorney would please read it.
Resolution number 2951, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville, a resolution of the Wilsonville City Council amending the City of Wilsonville Tourism Promotion Committee Charter of Resolution Number 2541, and then the minutes of the January 20th, 2022 city council meeting.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2951?
Your Honor, I move to approve the consent, do you not want the consent agenda?
Excuse me, I meant, I, I said that wrong. Is, was there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Okay. Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
There are seconds. The motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Well, can I ask, can I ask a point of order here? I said something earlier, but I, I was absent for the January 20 meeting, so should I be abstaining?
Those, those are just a reflection of what happened to the council, as long as you read them, you can still vote on them.
Okay, okay. I'll just take their word for it.
Thank you.
So I'm just going to say that again, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes four to zero. Do we have any city manager business?
Nothing too heavy-hitting tonight, Mayor, but I did want to make note of the fact that our very own mayor appeared on Coin News's AM Extra segment, where she extolled the virtues of all things Wilsonville. And if you haven't seen that, I'd be happy to send you a link, she did a great job representing the city. And also of note from the mayor's office, I did review the script for the State of the City speech, and I like what the mayor has done with Bill Evans in putting that together. I know that the mayor's going to ask others to appear in a video, and that'll be filmed at the library to celebrate the 40th anniversary of Wilsonville's living room, so I think that's coming along nicely. And then lastly, just one request of Councillor Leehan, I know that you're terming out at the end of this year, but if you wouldn't mind making yourself available for that history lesson of all things Wilsonville, once you leave office and retire from your six-figure salary here at the city, we would appreciate that, because we get a lot of great feedback from the participants that it's very informative. All right.
Well, I have one amendment.
Just made so clap.
Well, it was a, I do have one amendment to that, if I, if I could, or just add on to the city manager's report, that, if I can do that. The, the history presentation that Councillor Leehan gave at Citizens Academy had to get, you know, condensed, because we all talked about ourselves before it started, we should have just let her have the hour. But it was, it was very good, and it was a lot of fun, and I really appreciate, and it just thought-provoking, and, and people gave a lot of good comments, and I would appreciate if you would be able to come to future Citizens Academies. I also wanted to plant a seed that I'm going to be thinking about, I'm going to ask people to think about ways we can videotape and do some written records and researching to, to, to really record some of these stories in a formalized way, maybe in the next year. Probably a pretty big project, but I'm, I'm, I think we should be thinking about that.
I think we could certainly, you could film the council version of the Citizens Academy and put that on our YouTube channel, that's something we can do.
All right, that will be, that will be step one. Thank you. So that brings us to legal business.
Yeah, good evening again, Your Honor. Just as a matter, we need to take a formal vote on the matters we discussed on the settlement agreement in executive session.
Thank you. I would like to ask Council President Akavol to present a motion to that regard, please.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the settlement agreement between City of Wilsonville and the CWI Inc., Simmons Flags and Co. Inc., and SPI Wilsonville LLC.
Is there a second? The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I will call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting of the city council at 8:37 PM. Thank you.
Good night.